All the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Is there, like, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh. Review of the minutes from September thirteenth, regular meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do you like that?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved.
Has just entered the room. Oh, Charlotte.
Any open public comment?
I had a state car that.
Okay. I, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have an issue that I'd like to, I guess, get resolved or at least, I actually, I reached out to Michael today and had an issue with, I've had people driving across my yard. It's the fourth time this summer it's happened and it happened a couple days ago. And I don't know what else to do but to put something permanent at the edge of the road that would resolve it. I don't know if there's any ordinance that prevent me from doing that, like put some large stones on the edge of the property.
So they're cross, they're just like driving up onto the lawn as like.
Well, what it is, I'm on the next Oak Street and I'm on a curve and what it is, people are cutting the curve and it's, it's soft because you get runoff from the road and it's a low spot in the lawn and anytime somebody goes into, cuts the corner a little too tight, it's like a mud bot, instantly turns to mud and it's like, I'm looking at it right now in the yard, there's about a, maybe a four inch, you know, rut in the yard itself and I don't know what else to do to prevent that from happening.
What's the address again, David, that you're?
At nineteen Oak Street.
David, we'd rather not see something on the edge of the road bothering our snowplow.
Right, right. I don't know what else to do because it's a, it's a low spot and what happens, I bring out a fire actually when they were putting the power in across the street, the house across the street, it's brand new. They went across the edge of the asphalt and cracked the asphalt for a good, I should look at it right now, it's about a thirty foot section. Because I guess when it, when it did the overland a few years ago, it wasn't, probably wasn't properly, you know, firmed up and the overland is cracking now because of the soft, you know, ground adjacent to it, so. I'd rather not have people go through the yard, but I don't, I don't know what else I can do with this part.
I don't, there's no ordinance that is disallows you.
We can't have anything sticking up in there because of the plowing in order.
Co, did you say cones?
Yeah.
You could put cone, as long as they're on the lawn.
Um, yeah, and we had an email correspondence as well, kind of addressing the issue and what I suggested was to put some of the, with the skinny rods that.
Like there's like.
Yeah, to put along the pavement portion of the road. Oh, he's out there, outside now.
Yeah. I don't know if you can see it right there. Can you see that?
Yeah.
That's pretty bad. Yeah, I put the markers up there, I don't know if I'd say a permanent solution or not, but I really like to get, I don't know if the town can, because it's in the right way from town, correct? So, you know, I get some sort of made gravel and put some tussle on top of that to prevent it from, because all, all the rainwater washes off, it doesn't go all the way down to the storm drain, which is about thirty feet down the road.
I, I mean, you could put gravel as long as it's on his lawn.
Why don't we have John take a look?
Yeah.
That's what I was just thinking, yeah.
Yeah, let's consult with John before you do anything.
We'll have the road commissioner come by.
Okay, sounds good. Should we give him all that or Michael, can you maybe connect with John to have him up here?
Oh, yeah, and I copied him on that email too, so I'm sure he'll probably mention it to me tomorrow and I definitely don't have an issue with going up there and seeing if there's something, if, if there's an issue we can resolve.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. It's just, you know, I've had to go out and buy seed forty-four times now over the summer. I've had to, you know, you know, grade it, or not grade it, but, you know, tamper it down to that and receive four times. It's getting pretty, you know, pretty annoying at this point, so I just want to get this somehow, you know, resolved, so. Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, keep us informed now.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. All right, take care.
Thank you.
And for transparency and accountability purposes, I'll share that email traffic with you after the meeting, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Right, take care.
John, did you have something to add?
Yeah, hopefully just brought something up. And Bruce, you just said that you don't like stuff in the town right away because of snowplow and stuff, right? Well, if you go by the church.
Which church are we talking about?
The main church on the main road.
Catholic church?
The Catholic church.
Yeah.
There's a stone that fell off the stone wall. It's been there for two years and it's only probably, not even a foot.
There's, there's no stone wall in front of the Catholic church.
Across.
Just beyond this Catholic church. There's a stone wall where that house is, it sits all by itself.
On the opposite side of the church.
On the opposite side.
Oh, okay.
There's a stone there, it's a pretty sized stone, about big as this, been there for two years and it's not even off, probably a foot off the road. And yet our town crew and Bruce and you drive by it every day and nothing, nothing's been done. That's, that's an accident to really happen.
So first of all, I didn't notice that until about two months ago.
Well, it's been there a long time. But I'm just saying, it is a good example.
Time out, John. You were saying for two years.
Yes.
It was, to my recollection, it was about two months ago.
Well, it's been, it's been there a long time.
Long time and two years are two different things. I'm saying, the first time I noticed it, it was brought to my attention, was about two months ago. So I agree, that's a long time, but we haven't even had winter. So before you start saying that it's been two years and pointing at me, let's get the fact straight.
I'm just saying, watch it. I'm just saying, this is a good example. I would like to know, this town crew's working a ten hour day now, right? Am I correct?
Not any longer.
Not any longer?
They're doing it for the mainline project.
And I would like to know some things. I would like to know the cost of running around with these one ton dump trucks in the wintertime, pouring snow. I'd like to know the cost. And where's the savings on that, number, number two? All right? I would also like to know the cost of one of our town employees using a ton truck. I would like to know the cost of that. All right? And also, I would like to know is when they're not working, how come our town truck is either at the mobile station or the snow station? Number three. I give you two weeks to give me an accurate answer. All right? And also, one more thing, up by Mary Fergo's house, up by where she lives, I call that disgrace to put that kind of gravel in that thing across the culvert and the sewer. All right? And let them stones fly all over on people's lawns and also it hurt, you could dent a windshield. I watched a girl fall on her bike going across there. That should have been dug up, compacted, either put cold patch in or put a base coat down. That's the way it should have been done. And also I brought up about the machines being there for now and a half and an open ditch. An open ditch for now and a half with no employee around there. And kids do walk up and down there, you know that for a fact.
I don't, I don't know what date you're talking about, John. I don't know what time you're talking about.
But I just said, I didn't mention it to him. And, you know, if I did that on a job site, I would be fine for motion. And I would like to see the town do a, I would like to see how much that costs us to do them two culverts up there. I'd like to know that that costs labor, material, and to do that project. I'd like to know that that costs. I think you guys should really look at that because you're supposed to be looking out for my money or the taxpayers' money. I mean, I feel sorry for Mary. She's got stones all over her lawn. I really do.
We're gonna do it.
And you ought to look over, you ought to look over the bank, just over the bank. I think you should. And you should look over the bank. And if that was my property, I'd be raising hell. They should have put a silk fence before they dug that. I'm not here to cause trouble, but again, am I missing something here?
Well, John, we'll take everything into consideration and we'll get back to you on all the things that you noted that you're concerned about.
And one more thing, who has a CDL license in this town and who has took a drug test? That's what we're trying to find out. We can't get any answers.
It's the first time I've heard the question, John.
Well, I'm just saying, we have looked into it, we can't get an answer.
With who and why?
With, yeah, with who?
Never mind at this point.
Well, we don't work like that.
We're just trying to find out who has a CDL license and who has took drug tests.
So who have you asked though? That's the, I think that's what they're asking. Who did you ask about?
We asked downstairs.
Town clerk wouldn't know.
Well, no. We wouldn't expect them downstairs to know.
We got a town manager.
Does he know?
It, it's not something that's been prioritized for me to look into at the moment. I haven't had any, anybody seem intoxicated on the job site, so it just, it's not something I would bring up unless.
I believe the state schedules the drug tests randomly, so.
Yeah, but I just said, you got a dump truck, you have to have a CDL.
Right, we do, they do.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we would like to find out who it is.
We have three employees with CDLs and the new guys are working on it.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge. It's the last I knew from Stan.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. All right. Now, any guests? Anybody else have any public comment that's on the phone maybe? All right, good stuff. Fall festival, it's great, big turnout, really big turnout and the fireworks are great, big turnout there too. So it was really successful, I think, for a lot of the vendors and the groups that sold things. The person who did entertainment, music, said he had the best time ever. He said it was great, the kids were awesome. Huge turnout of kids, so it was really nice seeing, beautiful day, so. Thank you all that came and that definitely, that contributed and helped out, so. It's a long day.
Yeah, bar fodder sold a lot of chicken.
Oh, yeah, the fire, they, they sold out, I think, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good.
It was good. Anything else anybody wants to add?
I'd like to recognize two things. I think we had all commented, the communication that we've been receiving had been kind of spotty for a while. I want to thank both Michael and you for the communication this week about the various things that happened. That was amazing and hands down, this is the easiest to follow packet that I've ever gotten since I've done the board.
Thank you.
So Michael, thank you very much. That, that's, that's amazing.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, highway department. We got the highway report.
Michael, do we know when we are going to pave up in Chatterton Park?
Uh, on, you mean Fox Street?
Yes.
John has spoken to me and should, he's hoping for mid to early October, more realistically, mid October.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and we did have our first staff meeting this morning and it went really well, so we'll continue to do that and build on top of it, so.
I think everything sounded reasonable there.
Anybody have questions for the highway department report?
We just confirmed it's Park and Larson Street. I know it says Park Street in here, but three times, but it's Larson Street also, right? I mean, that's always been the point.
I think that got cut Larson Street. No, it didn't.
It's Park left, Larson, Chatterton Park, Chatterton Park.
Okay, anything to add, old or new? Is there a motion to go into the board of water commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The water report and delinquent accounts in here.
That bridge seems to be coming along a little, uh, by their.
The contractor. Contractor's doing a great job.
Yes.
I don't, I don't, if I've ever seen a bridge project.
That thing's huge.
Yeah, it is. Quite so quickly.
They're working a lot. They're there like.
Yeah.
Early in the morning, there's like thirty of them.
Yeah, I've been hearing about it.
It's impressive.
You know, they've stopped the nighttime work with the.
Few complaints.
But very few complaints that I.
Well, and it hasn't been really bad and I think a lot of people understand it's, they're trying to expedite the process, so.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't want to live close to it, no.
I kind of don't look forward to reopening because I know the traffic's going to come down my hill again and I'm used to not having traffic down there.
I've heard the rain was welcome to rinse off some of the dust off.
Oh, yeah. Slight flooding. All right. So is there any questions on the delinquent accounts?
Yes, the first few went well and when will we do again?
See, we sent out fourteen notices total this month, the month of September, and we are on schedule to install the curb stops that need to be installed for the notices and John will be working on that and make sure that they're installed before the.
And when does the state shut us down, do you know?
November first, I believe.
Okay, so we have a month.
Everything's been, and John was confident this morning at the meeting that he's prioritized everything enough to be able to meet that deadline.
Great.
So I'm just curious, there's like a big gap between, for example, on page two, fourteen, excuse me, One North Street and Seven North Street. Are those all people that don't have jobs? And is that why we reset this connection?
That is something I can look into. I know there have been some right of way issues, so could you say those addresses one more time?
So on page two, if you, so there's a disconnect notice that up to One North Street and then it skips a ton of addresses, some like people Pond Road, Park Street, West Street, Oak Street, Chatterton Park, and then skips all the way down to Seven North Street.
Okay.
And so then there's some much higher balances in that group.
That is something that we're looking to.
Thank you.
Could you tell me the total?
It's not total on this. We only have totals for each account.
Is there any more questions on the delinquent accounts? Anything else to add to water?
Yeah, we had, John was going to try and get a few fire hydrants this summer back in service there. Would you just ask him how he's coming along with those?
Sure will.
And Patch Street.
Yeah, Patch Street's been a problem.
Yeah, there's two of them on Patch Street, one at the wastewater, one on the quarter pass.
I'm sure John knows where they are.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And while he was working on, you know, Park Street to get those before paving, so.
Yes, yes, you know, we don't get to them. Hopefully we will.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to go out of water and into sewage commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The operation reports and then the delinquent was the same as the other one there too, they were added together.
The Donna Sewer Last Activity Report Sewer Problem Larson Street, found to be the homeowner's problem. Do we bill for that when? I don't know.
No.
I don't believe we did.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Any questions, anything else? All right. Is there a motion to go out of sewage commissioners into the regular meeting again?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Managers report.
Okay, I'm just going to go, I'm just going to fly through this. You may interrupt me if you'd like or you can wait till the end. Starting off with the Mortimer Proctor reallocation fund, so this was requested before I got here, but existing award balances have been re-appropriated towards a lifeguard kayak, paddleboard, lifeguard chair, and glider as requested. And, and that's just referring to some funds that were left over that we didn't want to mess up the books by sending it back and then requesting more, so it was just a reappropriation of funds that was approved by the, the trust. For rec update, this is the Virginia Outdoor Recreation Grant that was applied to. A hundred and four applications were submitted, Proctor being one of those, requesting a combined, so total of twenty-one point five million dollars. Invitations, invitations for four reports have been moved back to October fourth, which is about a week later than, than the town thought we would find out whether we were going to receive funding. But as I said, they got a lot of requests, so as soon as I find out who was awarded and how much has been awarded, I'll, I'll update the board and the community. Market on West Street Tax Stabilization Update, this was something that came up at our last meeting. The Curtises worked with Seeley and I and the subsidized amount from the tax stabilization agreement has been repaid along with the interest owed in full.
Great, thank you.
I have sent out three bids for the doors, or for the door downstairs. The sink right now is, is on hold. We, we're assessing need and want and there's a need for security at this time, so we're prioritizing the door. It's been hard to get ahold of carpenters. I think they're all, they must be all really busy this, this time of year trying to wrap up projects, but hopefully by the end of October, I'll be able to report back with bid amounts. Meeting with Senator Hinsdale and other local leaders. I attended a meeting about two weeks ago. It was, it was really neat. There were representatives there along with a few town managers that got to meet and shake hands with and kind of talk about what's going on in their towns and what's going on in my town. The discussion mainly revolved around the need for housing in the area and the roadblocks have been placed by policymakers that have, over time, driven away potential investors. So I learned a lot about Act two fifty and the, the long permitting processes. Not so much why, but just the fact that they are there. ERAF, so we're moving to emergency management now. ERAF stands for Eligible Public Repair Costs. Eligible public repair costs are generally reimbursed by FEMA at seventy-five percent with the state matching a minimum of seven point five, so we're talking about the aftermath of disaster and the funding. The state will increase its match to twelve point five or seventeen point five percent if communities take certain steps to reduce flood risks. An ERAF summary report is enclosed in your packet showing that Proctor qualifies for the maximum state match of seventeen point five, which is a pat on the back, I think. Well deserved. We received a second round of ARPA funds. I'll go ahead and list both of them now. On August ninth, twenty twenty-one, the town received eighty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. On September third, twenty twenty-one, the town received one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and three cents. ARPA comes up later on in the packet, so that's all the information we need to relay now. And Sheriff's Report update, I have an updated Sheriff's Report packet that was left on your desk, on the desk here when you showed up. It's, it's something I'm working with Lieutenant Bennet on and Sheriff Fox so that we can get those in a timely manner. You have time to review them before the, the board meetings. The most important part of this is there's, there's an email in there addressing an issue that's been going on for quite a while and in writing it says that the town manager will be contacted from now on if there's a dog bite along with the safety officer. And that is, that concludes my manager's report.
All right, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The action items in front of the board, reviewing the bills, I believe everybody signed them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Who knows what they're. All right, the skating rink and ice manager contract.
The, we got a copy on the desk here tonight too. Is there a difference? Apparently there is.
There's a difference between the two contracts. They are the same as last year, so I didn't change the verbiage in them at all, just changed the dates.
Okay, so we got a rink manager and an ice manager, two different contracts, okay. All righty.
Is there a motion to approve the contracts?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, managers' contracts are approved. All right, next, authorize Michael Ramsey as the administrative contact for the town of Proctor Water System.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Michael.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comes with a big ring.
All right. RFP for Clean Water and Healthy Ecosystem Project.
Would you like me to kind of clarify?
Just add a little to, yeah.
So this came up only about a week ago. It must have happened, it must have came up before my time, but I talked to Stan a little bit about it today and, so the Lake Champlain Basin Program, they're accepting RFPs now. It's up to fifty thousand dollars in funding. There's a little bit more in your packet about it. And this is for a storm, a stormwater master plan. So we're not investing in any best management practices or engineering practices. All we're doing is getting a lay of the land to find out what, what the hydrological characteristics of Proctor are. And these can come in handy in the future because if we do have a need for upgrades and we want to apply for grants, it, it looks like we've been pro act. So I spoke with the Conservation District on this. The fifty thousand dollars for most localities has covered the, the total costs. It's due October eleventh, but I'm going to work closely with the Conservation District to make sure we can get those RFPs in time. And just as it states here, that the planning grants for projects that will provide planning, design, and prioritization for water quality improvement projects in the Lake Champlain Basin.
So it doesn't cost us anything?
Should not cost us anything, that's what I made sure to clarify on the phone.
This has been going on for.
Twenty years.
Yeah, it's getting more serious.
Yeah, there's a lot linked to it. All the municipalities. But I have finding more so that the more you start these initiatives and programs, then like you said, the more grant money comes in because they feel like you're making an effort into doing things and stuff, so it's a positive.
And I, you know, one of my concerns are, is this going to kind of, is this going to make us more involved than we really want to be? But I doubt we're going to find out we're an MS four or anything like that.
We aren't one of the big culprits.
All right, so you need a motion to approve going out for an RFP?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moved. Okay, the next thing, invite public to weigh in on the ARPA funds appropriation options, the next select board meeting.
Yeah, that's been in the paper a lot, a lot of the towns are throwing out ideas and to find out whether they actually qualify, so there's a lot of stuff going out, but some of the things are under the umbrella of, of those funds.
And I know when the funds first came out, it was basically suggested that all municipalities meet with the public, that the community does have buy-in and some say in it. I mean, and like you said, sometimes you can use the funds for certain things. They've requested other things you can't, but. I mean, and like you said, sometimes you can use the funds for certain things. They've requested other things, you can't, but... And I feel like we put this on at one time to schedule and I think it just kind of...
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because highway, sewer, water, town clerk was gonna give you a wish list.
Oh, okay.
Like the lagoons and...
Okay.
So do you wish to hold it as a select board meeting or just a public meeting?
It would be up to, to you all ultimately what it would be, but I, people could submit their comments to me via email or they could show up at the next select board meeting and...
I don't think we'll get that many usually.
Okay. All right. So you want to put it on the next October's agenda?
I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
Maybe Carol could put it on the website.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, let's put it off the table.
Christmas is coming.
Okay. All right. Approve the LHMP Committee Strategy for Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I can provide a little substance to this if you like. Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, okay, so to quote Benjamin Franklin, an ounce of, ounce of prevention equals a pound of cure. And that's what a local hazard mitigation plan is. This is before the disaster happens. So, so we're not using this when things are going poorly. We're using it to prevent things from going poorly and, and to mitigate the problems that we usually have in the aftermath. And that's pretty much it. And so we're not, um, we're not going over this to approve moving forward with the plan. We're just approving the plan that the committee has put together to move forward. So what it looks like is these committee meetings are held privately and then halfway through the process, we have a 14-day notice for a select board meeting where the public can come review and comment. Um, and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has been pulling most of the weight on this and Stephanie's an incredible resource, so definitely trust her lead on all of this. It's a 75-25% match. That 25% can be from in-kind hours. So at the end of the day, we may not be, you know, handing over any cash. If, if, I think there's six or seven people on the committee, they just track their time in an Excel spreadsheet and then we submit that close to, uh, close to closing. So in your packets, I have a rough outline in the email showing what the process and what the plan is. But like I said, it's, they're the private committee meetings so that we can kind of move along through the process and open, open public comment. We let the community know, we let the government know, and we let surrounding areas know. And Stephanie has already taken action on letting surrounding areas know by putting it on the website and Facebook.
Yeah, because we're in, into the thing that'll allow us to get funds if something happens.
It's another, it's another one of those, it's kind of like the E-RAF. It's another one of those things that's showing that you're taking the next steps. And this is, this is for guideline purposes only. It's not legally binding. Um, it is approved by FEMA or a FEMA-approved organization, but by no means is this a legally binding contract. These are steps that have to be taken or you'll be punished. That, that's not how the document...
Right.
That's not the purpose of the document.
So is there a motion to approve the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved. All right, and there was a budget report included in your packet, too, just for reference.
I, I've changed that format from when Stanley was doing it.
Okay.
Mine's a little... He was transferring it over to an Excel spreadsheet, which kind of allows for some error. And this comes straight from the website, I mean, straight from our software.
Right.
There's a little bit more on there. I, I'll just give you kind of an opinion. And what they taught us in town manager school is you look for red flag numbers. So when you're looking through these, you see a lot of numbers, but when you're in that expenditure column, pick a number that's comfortable for you. You know, mine's 500. If I see something over 500, I, I look at that, that row and say, well, what could that be? If I have any questions, I'll ask Michael.
Anybody have questions on it? All right.
Michael, just in the future with the budgets, if we're gonna see these once in a while, show us red, would you, where we're in.
Oh, okay. Yes, will do.
All right. Is there anything else anybody has for old and new business?
Just at the end of, uh, the action items, could we just have an old and new business every two weeks? Just to catch up on things that...
Can do.
All right, anything else anybody has? There's a motion to adjourn.
Got any questions? What's the story on the lagoons?
You mean as far as repairing them?
Well, they gotta be cleaned and new lines. I, I don't want the taxpayers to get something next year and say, oh, we need a half a million dollars.
We've discussed that in previous meetings about having to repair those. In fact, it was mentioned that maybe possibly part of those ARPA funds could be used for that. Just to reduce the cost of it. Anything else, John?
Not this time.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that's on? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn?
So Mike, I'm gonna give you your paperwork.